... One Nation Under God, in the soul with the routine justice for all.
I hope I didn't startle you, but I know you wouldn't have heard me. Okay, good evening and welcome to the June 21st, 2022 Board of Selectmen's meeting. On the agenda this evening, first of all, we'll start, please, with a moment of silence for all those affected by COVID, the shootings, and people in Ukraine. Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is public service announcements. The first one on the Rotary Club, the deadline to attend has passed, however, I'll be bringing that up later on in the meeting about a proclamation for them. Okay, next, we have the Sturbridge Tourist Association will present plaques to the winners of the Business of the Year awards. Brian?
Good evening. My name is Brian Amity. I'm the chairman of the Sturbridge Tourist Association. I'm actually the outgoing chairman as my term ends the end of this month. If you recall back in 2019, we did the Business of the Year, our very first Business of the Year awards, and we made the presentations in early 2020, prior to COVID, prior to everything getting shut down. In 2020, we decided not to do this because, you know, businesses were still struggling and, you know, it was not fair to have a Business of the Year. So when September of 2021 came around, I brought this up to the board that we should do this again. And it took a little time, but we finally got it up on our website and the voting took place. So tonight, I'm proud to announce the winners of the categories that we have. We have the shop, eat, stay, and play categories. So our first winner for the Business of the Year is going to be in the shopping category, and that'll be the bird store and more. Okay? So I have both Bill and Nancy here.
[applause]
Danielle, right?
Desiree.
Desiree, I'm sorry. You know, Desiree works-
I'll answer to anything.
You know, I've known these folks for a long, long time. When I met him, I was the manager of the Sturbridge Coach Motor Lodge. They were my neighbors. So they've been in business for about 30 years. And it's an outstanding business. You can go anywhere in town, like Walmart or Tractor Supply, and buy bird seed, but you can't get the right information unless you go to the bird store and they'll give you all the facts about all the birds and what you should use and everything. So I'm proud to have them receive this award.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Part of what they also received, they will receive a $1,000 marketing grant from the Sturbridge Tourist Association and also a membership in Discover Central Mass, which is our regional tourist council for this area. So we're proud to have them. Is new members?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next award winner goes in the play category. Now, the play category can be a variety of different things. You could have one of the breweries as a play category. You could have, our first winner was Escape the Pike. So Hemlock Ridge could also be in the play category. But the voting took place, and this business has been going on in this town for over 75 years. And I think we all know what it is. It's Old Sturbridge Village. And Chris Tieri is here to accept the award for Old Sturbridge Village. Through the whole pandemic, the village was able to really get all their heads together and figure out how to make things work. And they did a lot of virtual, and then when things started opening up, people wanted to get outdoors. So the village just celebrated a couple of weeks ago their big gala with their 75th anniversary. So 76 years is starting right now. I know they're bringing back a lot of programs that they used to have before. So Chris?
Thank you.
[applause]
Thank you. And thanks on behalf of Jim Donahue and the whole village. We have some really exciting things coming up this summer, so keep your eye-
Thanks, Chris.
Chris is also a candidate for being on the next STA board, so hopefully she'll get appointed later. All right, the next award winner goes in the stay category. Again, this business has been around for 250-some-odd years, but the people who own it now have not owned it for that long. But they've made quite vast improvements to this property. I worked there in the early 90s, and I can tell you the difference today with the Chamberlain House and the Tilia House and all the improvements that the Harrington family has done to the public house property is great. And they could have won in a variety of categories. But I'm proud to present this to Michael Harrington.
Thank you.
All right, last is the eat category, or dining category. Now, this was very interesting because we had, it was pretty close in this category. And I was intrigued by the fact that the winner wasn't your traditional restaurant, which we have so many of here in Sturbridge, a wide variety of. And two of the follow-up people, one of them was an actual restaurant and the other was a coffee shop. So I'm thinking to myself, boy, people are really, really into things besides regular dining. So the award goes to Whoop-de-doo and Cupcakes, too.
[applause]
People love cupcakes.
People love cupcakes, yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes that. And hopefully, the new board will continue this practice now that we have our new website, Please go on there. If you see something that's out of whack or anything, let Terry know because it's an ongoing process that we have, and, you know, changes can be made. And if you have events, we want to know about them. So I thank the board.
Thank you, Brian. Speaking of presentations, Representative Smoller was going to be here to present to Brian and Tom Chamberlain. However, he's in budget hearing, so he'll be at a follow-up meeting. However, the Board of Selectmen has two citations. Be it known that on June 21st, 2022, the Town of Sturbridge Board of Selectmen hereby extends its congratulations to Brian Amity in recognition of over 10 years of service on the Sturbridge Tourist Association. And be it further known that the Town of Sturbridge Board of Selectmen extends its best wishes for your continued success. That this citation be duly signed by the Town of Sturbridge Board of Selectmen. Okay, and we have, is Tom here?
No, he's in Pennsylvania. Mayor of Tom.
It's hard to keep track.
Also in budget hearings.
Yeah, but we have the same citation for Tom, for over 10 years on the Sturbridge Tourist Association. So Brian, congratulations. [applause] Brian, do you just want to give it to Jamie so they can sign? Please.
Thank you very much.
Brian, I just want to say, you know, I know the STA is thriving now, but you were there during the transition to the STA from SADA, the trials and tribulations, and I just think you've done an outstanding job chairing that committee. So, oh, this is purple. Is that too, like, different? Shocking. All right. I joined Planet Fitness. They give away purple pens.
Is that an advertisement?
I guess so.
Hope you're not getting paid.
Oh, yeah, no, no. I paid my dues.
Again, thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. [applause] Now, those receiving the citations, you may leave. I can't imagine you would want to stay. Have a good night. Okay, I will go through the rest of the agenda. At 6:35, which was seven minutes ago, we had a public hearing scheduled. We can have public hearings later than the time stated, but no earlier. It's for a transfer of Class II and Class III dealer's license from Kerboy Auto, Inc. to Braca LLC slash IAA Corp. for 71 Mashapog Road, Sturbridge. Then we have a forest cutting plan for 15.7 acres of land on 227 Brookfield Road, Sturbridge, owned by Rowland Leclerc. Then we have the Town Administrators' update, department reports from DPW Fire Department. We have several action items, and I'm going to try to cut this one down, Michelle. Okay, these are all consideration and possible action on. Appointment of Christopher Why Not as a full-time firefighter/paramedic with the Sturbridge Fire Department. Appointment of Joseph Doldorian as a part-time fighter/EMT with the Sturbridge Fire Department. Appointment of Michael Jelineus as part-time firefighter/EMT with the Sturbridge Fire Department. A donation made to the Sturbridge Fire Department from the Sturbridge Lions Club in the amount of $150. Declaring the decommissioned commission of a 1992 Pierce Arrow as surplus and authorized to dispose of the unit. Common victual license for Lynn Cormier slash Wicked Licks at 380 Main Street. Sturbridge date and hours of operation will be Wednesday through Sunday from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Leon Goman III moving from full-time dispatcher to part-time dispatcher for the Sturbridge Police Department at the hourly rate of $21.69. H. we're going to hold until the police chief can make our next meeting. Okay, then adding the word "commercial" to all industrial connection fees under the new sewer and water connection fees. Request local routes to pay 50% of the ACPC with the balance of the annual payment to be paid by November 1st, 2022. Appointment of Peter Champagne, Chris Tieri, and Jasmine Bell to the Sturbridge Tourist Association. Reappointment of Nelson Burlingame as building inspector. Reappointment of Tony Crane as tree warden for the town. A hawker and peddler license for Dennis Walsh for farm stand at 446 Main Street. Transient vendor license for Wendy Collins slash Collins Gift for June 26, 2022 at the Sturbridge Host Hotel from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Transient vendor license for David Brockman, DB and BC Productions LLC for July 10th and 11th at the Sturbridge Host Hotel from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. A one-day liquor license for Agro &amp; Me Farm Vineyard to sell wine at the Sturbridge Farmers' Market on the dates listed on the application from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on the Town Common. Appropriation of Wetland Protection Funds in the amount of $5,882 for funding a portion of the salary of the Conservation Department's administrative assistant. Then we have old business, new business, Citizens Forum, and we do have a request for executive session. And I cut out half the words, so. Okay, so, public hearing, Chase? Oh, no.
Oh, I do it. Yeah, sorry. Got it, thank you. The Board of Selectmen will be holding a public hearing, Town of Sturbridge, in accordance with MASH General Law, Chapter 140, Sections 57, 58, 59. Hereby give notice that a public hearing will be held on Monday, May 16th, 2022, at 6:35 p.m., Sturbridge Town Hall, Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, to act on a request for a transfer of a Class II and Class III dealer's license from Kerboy Auto, Inc. to Braca LLC, IAA Corp., 71 and 99 Mashapog Road in Sturbridge.
Okay. Okay, would you identify yourself, please, for the record?
Of course.
Folks at home?
My name is Jonathan Silverstein, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Braca LLC. This application seeks transfer of Class II and Class III licenses that have been issued for many years to the property known as the Kerboy Junkyard. The applicant seeks to obtain transfer of those licenses and will operate the property, but will operate it in a way that's different, and I think the town will find much improved. Rather than being a traditional junkyard, what Braca does is they take in vehicles after natural disasters, and they have deals with insurance companies to take in totaled vehicles. They then sell them at auction online, and then the vehicles are gone within 60 to 90 days of when they come in. So unlike the current operation where you have some vehicles there that have been there for a very, very long time, that will not be the way that this operation is run. It's a very professionally maintained business. They have locations throughout the country. Their only other location in Massachusetts is in Uxbridge, and hopefully, the board has seen the Uxbridge Town Manager did write a letter acknowledging or emphasizing the way in which Braca came in and cleaned up that existing junkyard and has operated it without incident since then. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have about this project. I did reach out both to the planner and conservation agent, and I know they're here, and I'd be very open to any thoughts or suggestions they may have, and obviously happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, we'll start with the board first, Jamie.
Sure, I guess more of a technical question. Did you waive, could we waive conflict here? Because weren't your-
Oh, he's not with KP anymore.
KP anymore?
I'm sorry, I should mention-
That's going to be my call.
In March, I left KP Law. I am no longer with KP Law and never had anything to do with this property while I was with KP Law.
I was just confused, so I wasn't trying to give you our time. I'm concerned about the wells. I mean, that seems to be the glaring point. I'm not, you know, I read Becky's memo, and there's a lot of information here, but I guess that's the question, like, what assurances are we going to have that anything that's occurred on the land has been remediated? And secondarily, how do we know that it'll be okay going forward? You know, pretty basic.
So I haven't seen that memo.
Okay.
I did speak with Becky, but I wasn't aware that there had been a memo.
But we'll put the memo aside just more broadly.
Sure, so I don't know, I know that she'd raised with me concerns about, and I want to be really clear, there's an existing junkyard. It's there. If this transfer is denied, it'll just remain the way it is, which I think is worse, that we're going to come in, we're going to clean up everything that's there, and start a new operation that's run much better. So I think that the comparison isn't, do we want a junkyard or not? It's, do we want the current junkyard or do we want what's being proposed, which I think is much, going to be much improved. There's no controls in place. Who knows what's in those existing vehicles? There could have been spills, but there's more likely to be future spills if they're left to molder and rust out where they are. I don't, this is a well-capitalized company. Obviously, if they come in and they purchase the property, they're going to be responsible for cleaning up whatever's there. They may have remedies against the seller, but, you know, I think having a national well-capitalized company in control of the site is going to give you a better chance of a clean site than leaving it the way it is under the current operation.
So will the, well, I guess there's, what's difficult for me is I'm still sort of processing what's going on there right now. And so without having, you know what I mean? Like, I can't even talk about the future without knowing what the current utilization is. And then you kind of go from there, and it's going to be better, but I don't even have that first comparison, which really isn't on your client. It's just that that's kind of what we're walking into. And then, you know, so then comparing what, how that grows or doesn't grow, or if that's a restricted use, and what's the state of the property presently, it's just hard for me to kind of wrap my head around it at the present detail, if that makes any sense.
It makes complete sense, and I guess the only thing I can say is, if there are problems with the current operation, and again, the licenses have been renewed year after year to the current operation, but let's say they don't get renewed, you're going to have all those vehicles in place, there'll be no income coming in to do anything about it, and it'll, nothing will change. If you grant the transfer, we're committing to clean the property up within 120 days. And going forward, there are going to be protocols in place. They don't do draining of vehicles on site. The vehicles are going to be gone within 90 days of when they arrive, so they're not going to have time to rust out and leak. So I completely understand your concern with the current operation and the extent of it, and all I can say is your best way of getting that addressed is by having a new operation with these controls in place.
Well, that assumes, even within better remediation, though, that is, that kind of assumes an amount of utilization, right? Because even though it's might be, let's say it's dirty right now, but it's not being used very much versus getting cleaned up and being used a lot, that could theoretically have an impact. I'm not saying that's happening.
Yeah.
So those, I guess those are the details I need, but I think I've talked enough.
And I will say, we're proposing no expansion of the footprint, which is significant. So, you know, I guess it depends how you define utilization. Right now-
That's fair.
-there are a lot of vehicles out there with no, there's no estimate. I mean, it's, it's a lot. So getting those out of there, I would think, would be a benefit to the town.
Gotcha.
Okay, Ian?
I mean, I think it's great, the newer junkyard model is a better utilization of what would be junk cars that get used because there's so much parts value now, so. And like you said, a large company coming in and hopefully cleaning it up. I mean, I guess, have you had any communication, Becky, with them about cleanup or any, any kind of, have they discussed it with you yet?
So Jonathan did mention, we had a phone call recently, and he did talk about their practices to some degree and what their plans were for the site. The current facility, we have not had any communication with them over the years. As I put in my memo, and I did share with Jonathan when we spoke, you know, going back and looking at the aerial photographs over the years, it appears that, you know, the original junkyard cleared out of there. And then at some point in time, when the new owners came in, they did start to bring more vehicles back in there. From a conservation perspective, thinking about their jurisdiction related to wetlands, it does appear that areas that had renaturalized over time, when cars weren't there, they weren't using, were then, you know, kind of converted back into a storage facility area. Those activities within jurisdiction, I mean, we don't know the full extent of jurisdiction out there. We haven't been on the property. We don't have a wetland delineation. We know there's a perennial stream, so there's a riverfront area. Those activities, the clearing of the vegetation in those areas, and then also, you know, reusing that for that use, would have required review. So I think there's some concern with, we need to establish what the existing use areas are versus maybe what some of the historical use areas are. And I think it's important that we make sure that, you know, it is brought up to current standards if you do move forward. I think it is important that we understand, because it hasn't been regulated locally or at the state level, what is the potential concerns out there on the site? You know, is there current contamination from the past 10 or so years that's not being regulated by anyone? So I think it's important to have a good understanding of that as we move forward. And then also, too, we know that there were DEP files that were issued for this because there was groundwater contamination and then contamination in local wells. I think it's important that we have an update on the status of those. It appears that one may be closed out and one might be open, I'm not really sure, but I think that's important, too, in evaluating the future uses.
Anything else, Ian?
Oh, good.
Chase?
I agree with Jamie. My biggest concern is the wells. Is there any idea of how many vehicles are currently on the site now, or?
We don't have any estimate, and, you know, there's-
A lot.
Yeah, if you look at the aerial photographs, they're an enormous number. And again, I don't want to repeat myself. Those are going to be gone within six months.
I was just going to say, so if this, if this transfer were granted, within 120 days, all of those old vehicles are gone and the site is completely cleaned up?
Within 120 days of us taking control.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Obviously, there's some more that goes in once the license transferred.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that is the commitment.
And then, once, if the transfer were granted, everything was cleaned up, and then we would have a plan going forward, you know, vehicle storage, everything would be brought up to today's standards and codes for junkyard?
Yeah, I mean, there really aren't many standards as to junkyards, but obviously, any ongoing operations, we would comply, we would be in good touch with Becky to make sure we're in compliance with the Wetlands Protection Act. And, you know, do an evaluation of what's there now and what mitigation might be required. It's hard for us to know because we don't have site control, we don't, you know, but...
We really don't even know how many wetlands are actually in the site, right?
I think that, yeah.
We know why everyone can't chair as layers, what comes up on those things, but that's not accurate, it doesn't include everything, so.
Okay. All right, cool. Thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, I'll just echo the concerns that have already been raised. I don't think we are in a position tonight to approve the transfer of this license. Our conservation agent has just raised too many concerns, and so we don't even know the status of those DEP cases, the past contamination, contamination in the groundwater or the wells, or what contamination has happened since the influx of the new vehicles. So we would be very remiss not looking out for our residents to vote on this tonight. And, you know, yes, they're going to clear it, but I also believe they are strictly liable anyway for any environmental cleanup that has to take place. So I think it's great that they're going to do it, but they're also legally required to do it. So I just don't think that, you know, we can approve it today. I also just want to question a little bit, in this memo, it says, "A portion of this area is located at 99 Mashapog and 36A South Road, which, from our knowledge, do not appear to have a current license." So what exactly are you requesting a transfer on? It does not include 99 and 36A?
It does not. It's only 71. And again, if we get control of the portion that's 99, we would clean it up and we would use the portion that we're licensed to operate. We also, one of the things Becky had mentioned was staying 100 feet away from the perennial stream she mentioned. My client's willing to do that. Again, you know, I guess I would just reiterate, the alternative is that it stays the way it is, and it never gets cleaned up.
I'm just curious, your client, in purchasing this, did not, I'm not trying to be sarcastic, do due diligence and get copies of the current DEP cases for the contamination? They just agreed to, like, purchase it without knowing that?
So they have, they have a lease agreement with an option to purchase?
I mean, are they in, do you know what the current status of those DEP cases are?
We don't. So again, it's a lot of money to go in and do these analyses, and they want to know that they're going to be able to operate the business if they're going to do it. So the order of things would be, if the license is transferred, they'll take possession under the lease, they'll do all the work you're talking about, evaluate whether they then want to purchase the property. want to purchase the property. If they do purchase the property, they would be strictly liable as a PRP, a potentially responsible party, for environmental cleanup. That doesn't mean that the vehicles have to be taken out of there. That only means that any spills have to be cleaned up. So, but their, their commitment is to remove the vehicles, which goes well beyond what responsibility they might have as a PRP.
Well, it's kind of a chicken and egg. I mean, we're being asked to approve the transfer of a license when we don't even know what the cleanup is involved. I mean, so it just, it's, you know, and they don't want to go through looking into it, because, well, that's a business cost. They don't want to do that until they get the license. So, and then the other question, and this isn't for you, it's probably more for our own counsel, is, and it's a little bit more of a zoning question. So I know we don't allow them anymore, and this would be a continual, non-conforming use, okay? But at one point, is it no longer continual? Because here it says, the curboy, original owners of the property cleared some of that in 2008, and they didn't use it. So like, how long is something considered a continual use when for years it hasn't been used for that purpose? And I, you know, so that's something to look into, and if we can get something from KP in writing on that, I'd like that.
Jean?
Yep.
Jean Poubana, Town Planner.
Hi, so we do have some information in writing from 2015, when Suzanne Kennedy was here, I think some of you were on the board then.
Yep.
There was a question that there had been a, I won't say a lapse of license, but the license was still in the name of a previous owner, and there was, somebody else had taken possession and was operating. So we did get an opinion from Brian Riley at that point, and it was about putting in conditions relative to the DEP orders that were on file, and he recommended to the board that if you, when you granted the transfer of the license, that you included those conditions. And then Nelson and I had a conversation with Jonathan Eichman back in 2015. It was on the phone, but I do have, I had sent an email, actually, to Suzanne, which is in your files at the time, and it was based on our conversations. And at that time, we deemed that it was still lawfully non-conforming. So even though they had changed kind of where they were storing things and had moved around the property, that it was still lawful, non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming use, that it had changed in intensity in 2008, because they were transferring the property to another owner, and then the sale fell through, and then they started to kind of slowly repopulate that area again. I think it's very clear to see from the ortho photos, the aerial imagery that Becky put together, that you can see how the operation has kind of changed over the years, and has kind of filled back into the, to the old existing. But this email that I had sent to Suzanne was April 14th, 2015, and it's in your packet, because I actually received a copy from your file, and that was the information that we received at the time. So we felt pretty comfortable from a zoning standpoint, I think. Do you mind if I just say a little more while I'm up here?
Oh, go on.
So I did have conversations with Jonathan, and I think that, you know, the promise of, when they take possession of cleaning up the vehicles is definitely a plus, but I would love to see that as a condition of approval as well. And then also, I know that he talked about his client's willingness to do a, prepare a site plan, showing the areas that they plan to use, and I think that's a huge improvement from what we have, too, because we have, there was nothing that I could find in your files to give us a site plan of showing the areas that should be used. And I think the site plan should be attached to the Class III license, and it sounded like they were willing to do that. So I think, you know, with, I have the same concerns, making sure the DEP orders are followed. I think, from the best I could tell on my research, there were 11 wells that were being monitored in the neighborhood, and, you know, obviously, it's a, you know, a land use with a high pollutant load, so we need to be sure we're watching out for our residents. But I think if we can have some conditions in there that give us some assurances that these things are going to be cleaned up, at the end of the day, we could have a better operation. And I also had spoken to Jonathan, and, you know, they're well aware that any change or expansion or, you know, modification in type of use would require permitting through the Zoning Board of Appeals, because it is a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Thank you. Can I just follow? Thank you, you refreshed my recollection from 2015, when we had the interim, it was Mary and I on the board.
Yes.
My question is, we did attach conditions that, to the DEP on file?
Yes.
Did that prior owner satisfy them?
Well, I looked on the DEP website, and it looks like one of the RTNs has been closed out, but I was unable to follow the, the second one to the end, and I just-
Because if they didn't even satisfy the conditions for that initial transfer-
No, it looks like they, they have been, I mean, there are environmental reports that were filed with you as well, that I copied all of this information from your files, so CMG Environmental Incorporated was their LSP of record that was providing the information. So it does look like they lapsed, there was a lapse in a DEP order, and then started up with the monitoring again. And I don't want to speak 100% on that, because I'm just reading what I was able to find on your files and on the DEP website. So I don't want to say they 100% did it, but it looked, from what I could tell, that they, you know, that they were following those guidelines.
Now, when you say a lapse, was that a lapse by the license holder, or a lapse by the DEP?
No, a lapse by the license holder. It looked like they were, I'll say, maybe in arrears with some of their reports, and I don't have my glasses on, but this is, it looks like around 2015, where new reporting was filed, and I think that might have arisen as part of that initial transfer, when we worked with Suzanne Kennedy to gather up all this documentation, because it's in the same packet as the opinion from Brian Riley, and that was in 2015. And that's when he talked about the board having the discretion to attach conditions, making sure that they're operating under the DEP requirements. And he said, yeah, at that time, he said this, it appears that they have been operating under these requirements since 2015, and this appears to be a relatively small concern at this point. The contamination would not seem to be a strong reason for denial. The board should assess whether the applicant is a proper person to operate the business, and that he has a place of business suitable for the purpose, and that if the board is concerned, the new owner may not follow through on the DEP requirements. This could be incorporated as a condition of the license, in my opinion. And from what I can tell from the licenses issued since then, those conditions have carried in that license. But I don't want to be the expert that speaks to whether they've complied with everything for DEP. That's a bit out of, you know, what I do.
Thank you, no thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just, I'm still-
So it's, it sounds like, basically, we support the transfer, we want it to go to somebody who's going to carry it into the future and remedy the situation, but we want more information on what they're going to do.
You're more optimistic than me. I have the same feelings Mary does. I am not willing to vote on this, this evening, and if I did, it would definitely be a no vote. I think there's too much information out there we need. And I, first of all, think you probably should have started with the Conservation Commission. I mean, and get all your chicks in a row, or whatever the expression is, before you come for a license. I mean, there's so many if-and's or buts out there, and you talk about the letter we got from the town administrator in Oxbridge, saying how well the company runs that. True, but the company's only a two-year-old company, so I don't know how much background they have in this field. So that's the way I feel. I would personally like to see you people either withdraw your application now, or agree to a continuation till maybe our second meeting in July, so we can get information from everybody. Concom would be able to walk the property. We can get planners' input, health board. We don't have any information other than the application, really, Jonathan.
That's fine. We'll certainly agree to a continuance. I mean, I will say that the board did approve a transfer back in 2015, and-
But it was, it was a little bit easier than, we had conditions we knew we were going to put on it. Now it's, you know, we're not even sure what's going on down there. Robin, could you?
If I might. So I think that a little bit of a difference here, and the reason that I would support that continuance, is that there has been, from aerials, we can see active change in the vegetation, and not in its natural state growing, but the other direction. So man-made impact on the vegetation, and we can see that from the aerials. Conservation has a concern about that, because there was no permitting to do that. This is certainly not on their client at all, but I think if we have a situation where conservation may have had an order to issue, there absolutely needs to be an ability by the town to get onto that property, and conservation to walk that property to determine itself what has to be fixed. Certainly, we know your client wants to clean it, and that's wonderful, and I agree. We don't want to leave it the way it is, and would certainly rather have a reputable situation where we're cleaning up and protecting wells and all of those important things. But conservation does need to get on that property before anything happens, because again, we don't know what it is that has to happen any more than you do, but if there has been violation of conservation of wetlands, that has to be dealt with first. And so that is a concern, and then that other DEP question does need to be resolved. And I also concur that I think a site plan attached to it when we get to that point next time, a general site overview, or, you know, showing us that it's all going to be on 71, because there is that little bit of a question with the three properties, and is there any overlap? I think that that would be helpful. I'm just trying to put out there the things that I think need to happen, so that we don't have to then continue for the week.
Can I, can I have one? I have one additional question. So, so it goes to, and it kind of goes to what Ian's saying, and I understand what his point is, but it's, but we also need to understand what the use is and the business model is, because whatever the utilization is going forward, even remediated, if it was significantly heavier, that could theoretically be a problem. So it's, it's, I think that although, you know, we've listened to all of this, we need a lot of information retroactive, I still think there has to be a, and this probably is easier for your client, because I'm assuming these business models are-
I did provide a PowerPoint to Michelle that lays out what the business model is. And if there's more information, I can certainly provide it.
Yeah, maybe.
I think there was concern on the overlap onto the properties.
Properties.
So certainly, on that, we can do that.
Sure.
I will say, it's a, it's a large property, so to do a surveyed site plan without knowing if we're going to get the license-
No, not that, yeah, not to that degree. No, we're talking just a, a general plan to show we're not encroaching into the other-
Your client has a sense of why this would make the money.
Yeah.
They understand what this would, the use would be, and that's-
Just on 71.
Yeah, exactly, on the-
So just clarifying that we're limiting to 71?
Yes, that's, that's the only piece that has a license now.
Yeah, well, I can confirm that now, and I can confirm it in writing, and it's absolutely all, all we're looking for. And I did, I think I actually already sent an email to Michelle at one point, confirming it's just 71.
Okay.
So I don't know if you need anything else.
No, I just have a follow-up. I know you were getting into that you don't have to remove the cars. And Jean, when you came up, in addition to wanting the site plan, did you say that you would like to see the cars removed? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what's the position of planning on, on the cars? Because if those cars have been sitting there, and there's oil in them, have they been emptied, or are they contaminating the land right now?
Well, my understanding from speaking to Jonathan, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if his client does take possession, that would be part of their plan to remove within 120 days. So I think that if they were agreeable to having that as a condition, I think it might go a long way, too.
Oh, I thought you said that you would not remove the cars.
No, I'm sorry, I was trying to address your point.
But I misunderstand you.
Yeah, maybe I misspoke. So I was trying to address your point, Mary, when you said, well, since there's DEP action on here, your client would be responsible for cleaning up anyway, so offering to get rid of the cars is no big deal. I was trying to clarify, our responsibility would be, under the law, simply to clean up any spills. We wouldn't be obligated to remove the cars under the law, but we are obligating ourselves to do that. So I was just trying to make the point, actually, we are offering something that isn't otherwise required to clean up the property, to get rid of all those cars. We would accept a condition that within 120 days of taking possession, that all of the current vehicles are removed.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jean. Okay, anything else from the board? Okay, it is a public hearing, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Okay, could you come down to the mic, please, and identify yourself for the record?
My name's Mike Shuffler, I live at 56 South Road. I have bought the South Road piece of that parcel. I think we're dealing with a mirror, with a barrage here. I don't think there's any business going on there, except they're packing cars. I think they know about the, I don't, I forget exactly what we call, non-conforming use. I think they're, the present owners know about it. In order to keep the non-conforming use in play, they've got cars parked there. There's no junkyard, there's no cars being dismantled, the buildings are pretty much abandoned, nothing's going on there, no one's living in the house. I think, I don't think there's anybody there. Periodically, they show up there, and that's about it. They do a lot of shooting on the junkyard airstrip from time to time, and that's the only presence I ever see for these guys. So I'd like, and I know there's other people from South Road here as well, pursue the non-conforming out of it, and shut it down, get rid of it. There's no absolute reason we have to have a junkyard in that town. I mean, if they're not following the non-conforming by not using the land, why are we continuing to put out the permit? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Hi.
Hi, my name's Gina Cogano. My husband and I just bought a house on South Road last year in the madness. We love that it's quiet, and it's peaceful. The amount of birds and wildlife is amazing. So we'd like to just make sure that, like, it stays relatively quiet, you know? We lived in a hog roof for 40 years, and it was extremely loud. So like, how active is this business going to be? Yes, anything's better than a junkyard, but as long as it remains relatively peaceful and quiet, you know, that's a big part of why we bought a house on that street.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Down to the mic, please. You can line up.
Hi, I'm Todd Bagdusarian, I live at 96 Mashapog Road. Been there since 2009, I think. So I have a couple of questions. Say there's a lot of cars there now, but how many cars do you plan on moving? How often do you plan on moving cars? How do you plan on getting the cars in and out of the property? You know, you say the cars won't be there for more than 90 days, so they don't leak and they won't rust, but a car can leak in a half an hour, it doesn't need 90 days for it to wait. So what's going to guarantee that your cars don't leak for 90 days? You talk about a footprint, how big is the footprint of the property that you're planning on using? And you say that there are no real junkyard regulations right now, so I guess if there are no regulations, then there's nothing guaranteeing that you won't do to this property what's already being done, if there's no regulations.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, do you want me to respond to any of these questions, or not?
Well, as long as you record them. We, so we can get all the information for the next, for the continuation.
Oh, okay. So you don't want me to say it now?
Instead of back and forth tonight.
Fair enough.
We can take it all at once, unless the board disagrees.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I said it makes sense.
I mean, some of them may not be back here the next time, maybe they-
Yeah, but we have the questions.
We have the questions, but they may want to know the answers, that's all.
I'm sure they'll be here. Because I firmly believe we need a whole lot of information, we need it written.
Yeah.
Okay, there was another gentleman.
Chris Hendrick, 92 Mashapog, right across the street. There's no activity, I'll just echo what the earlier gentleman had said. There's nothing going on in that property, the same two cars have been parked blocking the entranceway. You can't pull a vehicle into anything beyond that front parking lot, so there's nothing going on there. So if there's a continuation grandfathering, or whatever the right term is for that, I don't see how it's been active at all. They have moved cars around, you hear the heavy equipment occasionally, not recently. I have the same sort of volume questions, hours of operation, if you're buying, it sounds like you're buying off insurance agencies or flood damage. So is that car haulers coming in and out all the time, or what is the frequency and volume of that? I think the noise question goes to that. Hours of operation, how late into the evening, early in the morning is it going to be running?
Those are usually conditions we put on any license.
On the license, it's the license transfer itself, okay? And then the other information that you all have talked about, getting a packet, is that publicly available information, or is that-
Absolutely.
That could be provided to residents, or it's put up on the town website, I don't know how you normally distribute it, but I'd be interested in the PowerPoint you mentioned, the memo, the Concom study. But I'd be interested in the PowerPoint you mentioned, the memo, the CONCON study, or CONCON, sorry.
Letter.
Yeah? I'd be real interested in that information to be able to ask more educated questions because I'm just reacting to what I've heard tonight, other than the certified letter.
There's even the immediate response action status report number nine. It is dated 2010, but it is about 500 pages of.
Good time.
If you'd like to, if you'd like to come in and read it someday.
Having some time sleeping tonight.
I just want to ask you a question. You said you live across the street right now and you see no activity at all?
None at all.
How many years have you lived there?
Twelve.
Yeah, so I'm still back to that original. How long is something considered continual use? I mean, if it's been sitting and there's, you know, evidence of people who live in that neighborhood, that they've, there's been no action for years. And back to that original, how long does a non-conforming use last? And at what point in time is it considered it's done? That operation is done, and it's no longer grandfathered in? That's my question. I mean, because, you know, we did it once, but, you know, I feel like now it's been years and years and years, so. Something that's.
It's a much better board now, too.
Something else to look into, probably a little smarter, yes.
Thank you.
Jamie.
I'm just kidding.
I know. Well, don't forget, we were on that.
Hello, Scott McCarthy, 22 South Road, obvious and a butter. I echo the non-conforming use question. And I guess a question for the board is, does any revenue or taxes have any to play? Like, does this play into it? Like, has it been an active business and have they paid any taxes to the town? Has that been an ongoing, you know, use? I more echo Mr. Sheffield that the place just ought to be shut down and really cleaned up. That's the real question is, I guess my biggest concern is, okay, we put in order of conditions on and all the rest of this stuff. I've just seen this go on too many times. Who monitors and how and when and how often? Because, again, I'm a hiker hunter, I run through the woods up there a lot, and there's all kinds of stuff going on up there. I don't know if it's a current order, whatever it is, but there's excavators digging giant holes with giant, you know, just filled with tires. Who monitors? Does that get cleaned up? Does that stay? And then what keeps that from happening going forward?
Well, to answer your question on taxes, we'd have to check with Finance Department to see, I don't think there's any business taxes coming in, but there would be property taxes being paid.
Sure, but it's a general non-conforming. It's not being used. Shortly after I bought the property, they came in, cleared the lot, filled it with cars, see you later. And that, that's what happened. I'm in the woods all the time, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Hi, my name's Jonathan Scott. I live at 67 Mashupog Road. I'd like to thank the board for addressing my concerns about the well contamination. I'm one of the affected residents. My concern there is, if you're coming in to clean up the property, regrading the property, doing any construction, paving, a lot of that soil has been contaminated. What assurances do we have that that work won't cause more contamination to our well water? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does your well get monitored right now?
Yes, actually, they're supposed to be out either tomorrow or Thursday to do the annual check.
Okay, just how often does your well get monitored?
Once per year.
Once a year?
Yes.
And for how many years have you lived there?
I've lived the house for three years, and they've been doing it once per year during that time. I believe they were doing it either quarterly or twice a year prior to that.
And have you, has it been clear?
Before the treatment tanks that they provided for us, there's been low levels of MBTE in our water, but the treatment tanks have been taking care of all of it. Which actually would be my other question. We currently have treatment tanks that are provided by the junkyard, or at least paid for by the junkyard. Is your client going to continue to provide that as well as the water monitor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask how many other people's wells are?
Oh, I was just going to ask.
You're going to ask? Okay, go ahead. I just wanted to know.
How many people in the audience also have their wells tested? One. Okay, and I'm sure there are others that aren't here.
Are they also annually like this gentleman?
They are now. When we first moved there 12 years ago, they CMG came more often, but now they are down to just once a year because they were showing acceptable levels of.
Thank you.
Hi, that's mainly my question. I've been there about 12 years now, and my wad is not getting tested, but my neighbors are.
Okay, now, where do you live?
I'm at 6 South Road.
Okay.
And I know that, like, about the five of them going along the side, south and Mashupog are getting tested, but mine isn't. So I didn't know, who do we talk to about having it monitored and?
Do you want to have, you want to have your well tested and it's not?
It's not.
I don't want to put words in your mouth. Have you been, have you asked to have your well tested and you've been refused or you haven't asked?
I haven't asked. I don't know who to ask. Well, we can go ahead and have it tested and pay it for ourselves.
No, that's all I meant.
But I just didn't know, who do we go to to see if they'll monitor? That's all, I didn't know.
Well, you could probably get information from the Health Board.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And really, we should have, Ken, we should have the Board of Health weigh in on this.
Well, that's why I said the three boards from Oden. Okay, anyone else? Okay, is there a motion then to continue the public hearing?
So moved.
Two, oops, we have a date and time specific.
Oh, I, what is the second?
Probably the 19th.
18th, it would be the 18th, I think, the July meetings.
Robin, is that enough time for you and your department?
I'm actually going to be remote.
It would be better if you didn't need to a month.
I don't know if we should probably go out even past the 18th. Should we go to the 1st of August? My concern is the, the longer we wait, if there's cleanup to be done, I don't want to delay it, but I want to give conservation enough time to get out there. Does July 18th give you enough time or do you want to go to August?
I think we go to August 1st.
I think to get also the answers to.
And Board of Health.
And Board of Health has to, so, yeah, why don't we go to that first Monday of August?
August 1st.
First. And we'll do our best to get as many answers as we can. Conservation will do what they can do. Jean and I will work with KP Law on getting better qualification of what is a continuation of use on that. You know, and there's an interesting dynamic going on, is simply storing vehicles, does that fall under the use of junkyard or does there have to be active business? And that, we just need a hard legal answer on that question. And we'll get that as well by then.
And are they paying a business tax?
And are they paying a business tax? So we'll, we'll get all the answers to those questions by then. And then certainly if, if your client can answer some of the questions for the public, I think that that would probably be tremendously helpful for the board if we can get some questions answered. And the resident who asked about well testing, certainly Board of Health, and if you want to go through us, we can get you to them, whatever you need to do, we'll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and, yeah, and copies of, for information for the public, all the public record, just email Michelle Goman in my office, and she can give you copies of everything that's part of the public packet.
To my motion.
So moved.
I got moved to August 1st at 6:35 PM for public hearing.
Why don't we make it 6:40? Only because it seems to take so much longer to read the agenda and all the.
6:45, that's fine, 6:45.
Is that okay? Sure.
Now I finally am moving.
I'll second Jamie's motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Jonathan, see you then.
Congratulations on your new endeavor.
Thank you.
We have another public hearing. Have the notice, Mary?
Oh, no, sorry. Oh, you know what? It probably is right on the tab. Anyway. Public hearing notice, in accordance with Mash General Law, Chapter 132, Section 40 to 46, the Board of Selectmen of Sturbridge will hold a public hearing on the petition of Roland Leclerc for a forest cutting plan for 15.7 acres of land on 227 Brookfield Road, Sturbridge, owned by Roland Leclerc. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 21 at 6:35 at Sturbridge Town Hall, Veterans Memorial Hall, Main Street, Sturbridge.
So my name's Kay Markey, and I'm the forester working with Skip.
Okay, you're welcome, Kay. Kay, do you want to explain the project, please?
Sure, so as you guys know, gypsy moth has swept through the area pretty hard. I think that's one of the areas in kind of Sturbridge, Brimfield, that got hit the hardest. The lot is kind of, you know, it's been bisected by the Mass Pike, there's not a lot of great access, and unfortunately, the landowner slash logger is dealing with a lot of dead trees in the overstory. Right now, he has the potential to access through a lot in Brimfield to get in and do the cutting, so he'd like to do that while some of the trees can still go as firewood versus right along the pike, a big standing dead stand of oak. But there are going to be, there's also going to be other trees cut in there, too. It will be a sustainable harvest, and the point of this type of cut is to create openings wide enough to regenerate a diversity of species.
Questions from the board? Okay, maps are always difficult to read. Is there any access from Sturbridge?
There's no access from Sturbridge, no. And I communicated that pretty early on. I am aware of the road bond if they were to be driving directly onto Sturbridge Road.
Right, 148.
No, this isn't going to head this way. This will actually go out and then go to Little Alum Road and then hook over to Route 20.
Okay, is that a guarantee?
How are you feeling? Is that a guarantee?
Pretty much.
Yeah, I can't see.
Well, okay, we can put it.
Probably to Saw Mills.
Put it as a condition if it's approved.
Sure.
Questions from the board? Comments from the public?
I think, well, I do have some questions, public questions, if I could. So why, why is there access from Brimfield right now when there wasn't previously?
Because an adjacent landowner is going to allow him to access through his parcel.
Okay. And, and so what's the, you know, it's sustainable harvest, but I've seen a sustainable harvest, it's pretty aggressive still, some places, so.
Yeah, I think it depends. It's a knee-jerk reaction. I mean, trees are good. We like trees. This is a well forested town, so. I'm trying to think of really how to state that because I know that heavy cutting can be deemed unsustainable. I'm going to say some of the most unsustainable timber harvests can be light cuttings. That's when people will go in and take the best wood and leave all cordwood behind. And driving by, you'll drive by and think, wow, that looks nice. It might not always be nice. Sometimes heavy cutting can bring a bunch of benefits to the area. That's, in that area, a lot of people are leaving a pretty even-aged overstory canopy, trees all around the same age, closed canopy. This will bring a little bit of diversity into that area. So there will be areas with well spacing between the trees, and that's something that is required by white pine to grow back in and to grow very well. The soils on that lot are relatively sandy, so it's a good site to regrow white pine in. Did that answer your question or did I kind of go into nine places and not answer?
Well, it does answer my question, but I guess we're, I guess it's probably easier to state sort of my concern and then back to one to that. So because we're dealing right off the pike there, that I don't, I'm not sure what the additional runoff would be. I'm not sure.
It wouldn't go up to the pike due to the terrain. No, it actually kind of, the whole lot, the slope is coming down from the pike. Of course, the resource areas were addressed in this plan. The ground in the southernmost portions is kind of the softest area. There's not a lot of trees in there, red maple. I don't see any concern for flow channeling into that area and creating any type of concern. And then due to the location of the land, there's no place a channeling can put water out onto town roads.
I have nothing else. Good.
Anything else from the board? Public hearing, anybody in the public? Okay, is there a motion then to close public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the forest cutting plan for 15.7 acres of land on 227 Brookfield Road.
Okay, did you want to put that condition on traffic?
That we will have a, that you will conform to all traffic.
Well, the specific one through Brimfield and.
What road do we want to say? That we're going to use for access? What's the road?
Little Alum.
Little Alum, so access only through Little Alum.
Oh, access through Sturbridge, basically.
No. We can access heading up towards Cheney's, up through the Brookfields, going Little Alum Road.
Okay, so Mary's words are better than no.
I mean, there's any other way.
No roads in Sturbridge.
There are gravel trucks that come out of there that go use that road every day. Out of Chester's pit.
I'm just getting confused now. Are we utilizing roads in Sturbridge or not?
I, I can bypass them, you know, though, but I don't want to be limited to Little Alum Road when I can go up to Cheney's.
Yeah.
Right, no, that's what I said, Mary's words better, no Sturbridge roads.
There are trucks that go that way out of the pit every day.
Yeah, but that's.
Because otherwise we have a bond.
Not the application we're for.
The bonding issue.
And normally.
Does he pay a bond? Does Chester pay a bond?
He's Brimfield, he's Brimfield. Where he comes out is Brimfield, it's not Sturbridge.
Okay, that's what we're here for.
Right. No, I'm not giving you a hard time.
I'm not either. I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that we're not using Sturbridge roads.
Right.
Yeah, correct?
Is, is.
Yeah, I guess my language was a little limiting, and I put him just onto Little Alum, but there is the route up, up towards Cheney Orchards through there and into Warren.
Right, we're just concerned about.
And normally, we have other orders of conditions, but I guess because we're not going through Sturbridge, we're not concerned with the bus routes, and usually it's dawn to dusk, we're not concerned with any of that either.
It's not our town. Okay, so Ian, do you want to adjust those words, please?
So to not use Sturbridge roads.
Zero second to the motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Well, thank you all. Have a great night, cut less.
Okay, let's see. Next, we have town administrators update.
Very brief. The, I just want to let the board know that the building committee for the senior center selected its owner's project manager of CMS, and they'll be moving on to their next phase, so the project is rolling forward. And I just wanted to update you on that.[1704.12] And I just wanted to update you on that.
Thank you, Mary.
No, I realize, no, no, during public announcements, I realized just to welcome Rob, and this is officially your, well, your-
First real meeting, but it's the first real one, yes.
We're very excited to have you onboard with us, so.
Thank you, excited to be here.
They'll ask in a year. Kay, department reports, DPW, Heather. This is Heather Blakely, our new DPW director, this is her first meeting before us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I know that I have provided you with a couple monthly reports from my predecessor, and I also, I believe you got a memo from me just about some of the projects that I am working on, which, if you don't mind, I'll just kind of briefly go over these. So, currently, we have a couple projects that are upcoming. Maple Street Waterline, at the time when I wrote this, I didn't think we would, well, actually I did. So, it is expected that we'll be starting in September. We had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor last week, so he is getting everything in line to be starting in September, so there'll be more information regarding that and the road closures associated. We will be doing a bypass for the existing customers on Maple Street, so that there will be more information. He expects the work to be done relatively quickly, way before winter. Then, next year, the plan would be to come back and pave it, so, which is all good news. Also, I've been working on the complete streets project for Cedar Street sidewalks. We're also looking to maybe package that with, when we got the grant money, and I don't know a lot of details on this grant yet, because I haven't got into the weeds of it yet, I'll be honest, I know it exists, but we got a grant for a considerable amount of money, I think it's close to a million dollars. Maple Street didn't come in as expensive as they expected. The preliminary indication is that we can use that money to replace additional AC pipes in town, which is great. Cedar Street happens to be one of the roads that has some AC. We are trying to figure out the limits of that right now, but we're hoping that maybe we can bundle the two projects together, replace the water lines, get the sidewalks done, repave the street. In addition, that brings me to the next project, which is a safe routes to school project that they were working on, which will be further down, because it will be a tip project, but they're looking at putting a boardwalk in adjacent to the driveway, as opposed to actually taking up any room in the driveway, which is a very narrow driveway to the school, which is, when they came to the site, I wasn't there, but from what I heard, they were very concerned about limiting any, putting a sidewalk on that driveway because of the number of buses that go in and out of there multiple times a day, which I echo with their concerns. And the solution, even though there are wetlands adjacent to that driveway going to Burgess, would be to do some type of elevated walkway. So we are in process of doing the, some of the additional applications for that grant that we need to do to get it on to the tip project, to get it approved, which it will be a pretty considerable amount of money that they're looking to put into it, so it's pretty interesting going forward, more to come on that. Then, we have already opened the paving awards for this year as far as the costs, so we're trying for the FY '23 paving. The roads that we were looking for, looking to pave are the Trail, Lead Mine on the north side, Hillside, Ridge View, and North, the North Road and the Cemetery. We have currently been out taking samples of the roadway, looking at the drainage, making sure we knew exactly what needs to be done. We cut some sample of the asphalt out, so we know how thick it is before we go out and do any reclaiming or resurfacing out there. So we're getting our plans together there, I would think that we'd be probably paving sometime in August and September. So I think that's pretty much, from day to day, different things seem to pop up, let me tell you, but we, we're working on that. I know that I'll be working with Recreation to look at some of their field soils. Robin just asked me to help around that today, and we'll be moving forward, and I'm sure there's other things, and I'm like, can't remember, but those are some of the major projects in my first couple of weeks that I've been working on, so I'll be happy to try to answer any questions of any of the previous things or any of the things I'm working on.
Ian, have any questions on, first of all, Which's previous reports, if Heather could answer? No, any questions on Heather's?
I just had a question. First of all, welcome to you as well.
Thank you.
So excited to have you. This isn't, I know that 131 is the state-
Oh, I can answer some questions on that.
We got a lot of questions about, when is the state going to pave? I guess, is that called milling when it's all gravelly?
Yes.
Okay, my husband-
So what they did on 131, yes, they milled it, they took off the, probably the top, I didn't measure it, but inch and a half or so, they milled down, and then they will be resurfacing. So what they've had to do after they milled it, they had to go around and check all the structures, our water gates, all the catch basins, make sure that they're all solid, because when they mill it, a lot of things get disturbed, so they've been working on that. They had to put new, what we call the traffic loops, which control the traffic signals. If you notice for a couple weeks, right after they milled, the traffic, especially here, was backing up probably worse than normal, and that's because the loops weren't functioning, so they just had them on a time system, so that would go for two minutes going one direction and then switch to go the other direction. So the loops are back in and active, they had to do them here, they had to do them up at the Shaw's Plaza, so those took some time to put in. My understanding is they are ready to pave at this point. At one point last week, they thought they might be paving this week, they've run into some issues elsewhere. I got an email this morning, so I would hope that maybe next week they'll be paving, and that actually takes, that's the same for here, and then 15, they'll be doing the two projects, you know, at night again, paving. So they'll be doing, finishing one and then switching to the other. I know they have some complications with pilot, with scheduling, so they've had us, the Fire Department and the Police Department, we all met on site, and we're waiting for a plan from them, they're trying to work with pilot, because they can't really put pavement down with that number of trucks going in and out of there. So they're working on that, but they have any communication with me on that schedule. So the more I know, when I know, we'll make sure that it gets up on the town administrator's website.
That would be good, because then we get a lot, I mean, myself, a lot of residents are like, what the heck's going on on 131? They're, they're all got tires, because the catch basins are-
They're higher, yeah. I would say, try to do due diligence and be careful, but it is part of the normal process, that you have to, it takes a little time, because you want to make sure all those structures are properly secured, so they don't fall in after the fact, and then you have to have someone come out and repair them and cut up the road, which is what you don't want. And we'll all be happier that those big potholes that we've been, we're dealing with all winter on that road aren't there any longer. They were definitely getting very hazardous from, I know all of you traveled it, I did too, it was, it was very concerning. So I'm happy to see they're doing the project, but-
You're thinking next, you're thinking next-
But it was like that everywhere.
It's been a fun wake-up call for me anyways, it's nice at 2:00 AM.
You're in the past, though. I'm not going to be a complainer, but my other question is, because I get this, the work that's being done in front of Yankee Pedler, that has been a very long process. First of all, I feel bad for that business. We were buying some plants, and he said he's very adversely impacted, because it's just gone on and on and on, which is a shame. But also, for people walking or utilizing the sidewalk, if you're on that side of the road, there's really no safe way now to cross the street to get onto the other side from the pedal, I mean, there's like, no notice, there's no light, there's no crosswalk, there's nobody directing traffic. So I don't know what the state can do about that, can they put in a temporary, like, crosswalk to get people across?
Yeah, I will, I will send an email to the state, I had some communication with them today regarding the schedule of that project and some other concerns that we had going on there.
It's actually quite dangerous.
But I will-
You have to turn around and kind of walk all the way back.
Because there's no sign there saying-
No, there's nothing that's, and it protrudes out, and really, if the state's going to do that, they should have somebody there crossing pedestrians.
No, I will, I will bring up to them that they need some type of signage at the previous crosswalk at least, and signage in the area to say you need to go around, or, usually there is a police officer there if they have active construction, but not always, not on weekends, you're right, not always, only when there's construction going on. So, unfortunately, when I spoke to the contractor today, he said that it would be well into the fall before they're done there, but their schedule that I received from Mass DOT doesn't have them finishing until next May.
What is the, and I know they found some contamination, right?
Right, they had, they had a very big delay with the contaminated soil.
Is that cleaned out now?
I believe the soil is cleaned out. They also had additional delays because they found more ledge than they were expecting, so they've had ledge.
Ledge.
So they've had to alter some of their designs and what they were doing there. I don't have the specific details, but I do know that they gave me their schedule. It is a year longer than what it was originally proposed, 351 days, I saw the schedule. So, originally, it was probably supposed to get done this May, and now it's a year because of the contaminated soil and the ledge problems.
So if it's going to be that long, I really think they need a crosswalk, they need, not even a sign, I mean, if it's going to go on for another year.
I think that's a very reasonable request. They did it on the one end, I know that they did on the, I'd say, the near end to us right now, there is a crosswalk right before the process, and they cut it in. So that, I don't think it's unreasonable, I think that they probably would, will comply and assist us, so I will, I will put it out there to them and ask, and I'll tell them it came from the selectmen.
Right, and could you let us know what they say, because-
Yes, no, I'll-
My question was the same thing, I'm 20.
Yeah, I do think it's-
Not walking, I don't walk, I ride.
But I do think it's going to be a year. I think you might see something this fall improving as far as like, the plates out of the road, which would be a big improvement, and maybe they could do some, some of the thing. I have a feeling they want to have a longer settling period to allow the pavement, and they're probably paving in the spring, that's why they're giving that May, and then there's some other cleanup, get the sidewalks back in order and things of that nature that they'll probably be doing. But when they do a large excavation area and a large project like that, it is very customary to allow it to settle over winter, so that you don't have any subsequent settling for any reason, even no matter what they're using for backfilling and how they're backfilling. You want to see that freeze cycle and settling, it's good practice. So, I have a feeling that's why they have that May date, they want to do the paving in that timeframe.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Forrest?
No, see, those two things, I did, no, no.
Things are going fine, all right?
Things are going great.
That's good. So thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
Enjoy the nice weather. Okay, next we have Chief Grasso from the Fire Department.
Evening.
Good evening.
You have in front of you the monthly reports for April, May, March, April, and May. I wanted to just point out a couple of things. We did have two structure fires over the last couple of months, one on Hall Road and one on Breakneck Road. No injuries at either of those fires. There were some displacements, but the crews did a phenomenal job making a quick attack and a fast stop and really preventing further damage to both of those structures, so I wanted to just highlight that. The other thing I want to highlight in the reports was a request for a, an inspection schedule. Lieutenant Nash has taken over fire inspections, and you have a copy of the boilerplate schedule for the life safety inspections that the Fire Department will be doing annually throughout the town, and it's broken down by the type of occupancy. We did highlight that any, any business that needs to have a liquor license inspection, that inspection, that initial inspection will be completed prior to October 31st, which gives us 60 days to remedy any deficiencies that have to happen before the end of the year, so that we have plenty of time to get those inspections done and those certificates issued. We have picked up our training again, things are starting to loosen up a little bit in the, in the fire training world. The Mass Fire Academy is conducting classes. We've always continued to do our day-to-day training, however, now we're seeing some of the classes that we've been waiting for begin to open up. We have several members who are interested in attending the National Fire Academy for a various, varied amount of different classes, which is a phenomenal opportunity. So we will continue to do our day-to-day training and supplement that with some specialty classes that, that we can fit into our mission statement. So I'm very happy about that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Questions from the board, comments? I see there's a few thank you notes from satisfied customers.
Yes, I, I, I'm always remiss and I apologize for not highlighting those better, but we are very pleased at the response we get from our, our citizens. The thank yous, the generosity, the cookies, and, and other various treats that get dropped off at the firehouse, and, and we truly appreciate that. It's, it's certainly not why we do the job, but it's definitely appreciated.
Anything else from the board? Ian's note.
If it's okay, I'll just sit here for the next couple of things.
Yeah, keep them all here. No, you've got a lot of, I can't remember the last time, if any, you've had any letters expressing dissatisfaction with the EMTs and paramedics, and-
We get one a year.
I didn't even think we got that, so.
When you consider the source.
Kupinski?
No, no.
That beast thing really got me.
Not even the same patient, fuck.
No, I think these have really spoken from the heart, so you should be very proud of your men and women.
Okay, now you have some appointment requests.
Yes, Christopher, come on up. I will preface this with, tonight is the, kind of the culmination of the filling of many, many vacancies that we've had over the last several months. Chris Wynott, who I'm bringing forward tonight, will be the final full-time vacancy that we have to fill. This will put us at our current level of full staffing, and I'm very happy to get that accomplished. So Chris is a nationally registered paramedic, he's also certified Fire One, Fire Two. He's been in the fire service since 2004, and he's been a paramedic since 2009. So he's bringing with him a good level of experience that we're going to leverage very quickly and get him to hit the ground running. He's certified as a Fire Instructor One, and he holds numerous other fire and EMS certifications. I, you know, respect, respectfully request you confirm his appointment tonight at a pay rate consistent with provisions of Article 7 of the agreement between the Town of Sturbridge and the Teamsters Local 170, and this appointment will be effective tomorrow, June 22nd.
Questions from the board? Would you like to say anything, Mr. Wynott?
Just looking forward to starting and serving the town.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I move that we appoint Christopher Wynott to the position of full-time firefighter and paramedic, consistent with the agreement with Teamsters Local 170, effective June 22nd, 2022. Do you want me to list the actual rate of pay?
Well, we didn't get it, it says, you said it patently in your, with the rate of pay consistent with the provisions.
It's consistent with the CBA, so, okay.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Next up is Joe Doldorian, Joseph Brimfield resident, nationally registered EMT. And once appointed, he will be enrolled in the Massachusetts Fire Fighting Academy Calvall Recruit Training Program, scheduled for this coming fall, it'll be held in Lester. His paperwork has already actually been completed, we just have to submit it after the appointment tonight. In the interim, he will begin in-house orientation on the policies and procedures of the Sturbridge Fire Department, and he will actually begin working with our personnel to get kind of a head start on the academy. He'll get a basic orientation with us before he actually goes to the formal training, so hopefully it gives him a little bit of a leg up, so to speak. So, upon appointment, his rate of pay will be consistent also with the provisions of the, of the CBA between the Town of Sturbridge and the Teamsters, and also effective tomorrow, June 22nd, 2022.
Any questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the appointment of Joseph Doldorian with the rate of pay of Article 7 in the agreement with the Town of Sturbridge, Teamsters Local 170, effective June 22nd, 2022.
As a pat time.
Our time.
Firefighter slash EMT. Going to get all the votes.
You're killing me tonight.
The money's not there. Everything else.
Good.
Thank you, Ian.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Get to bed.
Oh, don't worry about it.
Last, but certainly not least, Michael Jelineus is a Sturbridge resident and a nationally registered EMT. He holds numerous scuba diving certifications, as well as other OSHA-related safety training- He holds numerous scuba diving certifications, as well as other OSHA-related safety training certifications. He will also be going to the Calvall Academy in the fall, so they're going to be lucky enough to be partnered up and study buddies. And he will also begin his in-house training in the interim. Mike is also a...
Are you a master electrician?
A master electrician. So we shouldn't have any light bulbs out or switches that don't switch. So I'm looking forward to that, too. So I respectfully request his appointment be confirmed, and his rate of pay will, again, be consistent with the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Sturbridge and the Teamsters Local 170, and would be effective June 22nd, 2022.
Any questions from the board? Would you like to say anything?
I appreciate the opportunity, and thanks for having me.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint.
Ian, don't take it personally.
Appoint Michael Jelineus as a part-time firefighter, EMT, with the Sturbridge Fire Department, with a rate of pay consistent with the collective bargaining agreement and a start date of June 22nd, 2022.
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations.
Who are you? Donation?
Yeah, you're right.
If there's any questions about...
If everyone clears out.
Just going to go plan it out.
Give me half a second.
Yeah, yeah. That's the one that rotted out and had to...
Chief, did you want to address the vehicle?
Definitely.
Engine three, which is the 1992 Pierce Arrow, was the vehicle that we purchased for $1 from the company we bought Engine Two from about a year and a half ago now. That was really just a bridge vehicle because we were down one truck, and quite honestly, the cost to keep it on the road is going to be not worth spending the money on. And even keeping it as a spare, it's still going to cost us a bunch of money. It barely made it through inspection this past time, and the inspector said, "Next year is probably not going to happen." So the plan is to, I was working with Rob, and to put it on Minnesota bid and see what it can catch, and, you know, we'll get rid of it that way.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, somebody want to make a motion authorizing the disposal?
I'll make a motion to authorize the disposal of the 1992 Pierce Arrow to surplus and authorize the disposal.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, and then we have the note on receiving a check $150 from the Sturbridge Lines. Okay, the chief respects. I request that we accept with gratitude. Is there such a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
And thanks to the lines club.
Thank you.
Okay, next, common victual license for Lynn Cormier. Slash wicked licks. Most anticipated thing in town.
I want you to test it out, make sure it's complying with everything. You've got that beautiful sign, and every resident asking, "When's it open?"
I know, and I can't give a specific date because I have to make sure I pass the Board of Health and all that. So, you know, my goal was to be open for the Fourth of July, but unfortunately, it's not going to happen, so maybe the week after.
Got a little sign coming soon.
Just building anticipation.
Yes, well, believe me, I keep stuff, I'm telling you, I swear, everything that could come up has come up, so it's like just one issue after another, so, but I'm still plugging through because, you know, I believe in it just as much as the town does, so.
No, it looks great from the outside.
Oh, thank you. So obviously, I want to sell ice cream. I didn't know I needed a vic, how do you pronounce it?
Victular.
Okay.
Well, anytime you...
Sell something to the community.
Well, not really sell. You can sell and take out when you don't, but if you're having tables and people will sit and eat.
Okay.
So that's what kicks it in.
Right.
It's, I think it's $20.
Forty, I think.
Forty.
And I want to thank Michelle. Michelle picked up on that, actually, or else we could have had a little disaster.
She did, she called me and I was like...
On the fact that there hadn't been a license application.
Right.
And she'd been driving by and saw the business going in and realized that she hadn't seen a licensing application, so I want to thank Michelle for a quick pickup on that.
Exactly. I didn't know what it was, so I don't know what kind of information you need from me or...
No, I think it's already going to be closed Monday and Tuesday.
Yep. But I will be open on Mondays if it's a holiday, so for Memorial Day and Labor Day, I'm not sure if Juneteenth, is that always going to be Monday off? Or it just happened to fall this year?
It fell on a Sunday, so we celebrated it on a Monday. Next year, it'll be on a Monday.
Okay, and then the same with July 4th. If that were to fall on a Monday or Tuesday, I would be open.
Well, we can put that on the license.
Okay.
Mondays if...
Mondays or Tuesdays, yeah, if it's a holiday.
Depending on the holidays.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
What kind of ice cream are you selling?
It's chocolate shop, so it's coming from Wisconsin. My father has an ice cream store in Minnesota, so I'm using the same distributor from there. So they use, you know, Wisconsin cows and the Wisconsin milk from a Creamery local, and it's super premium ice cream. So in order to qualify for super premium, you have to have overrun that's less than 50%. So they have between 35 and 40%, which basically means you're not putting as much air into it, which means there's less ice crystals, which means it's a creamier ice cream.
She's killing me.
Rubbing in.
Generally not open on Mondays, so we can't have a meeting there.
Yes, yes.
Or you can go at noon time.
So, yeah, I mean, it's been very successful for my father. I will be the first one in Massachusetts or along the whole East Coast to get this ice cream.
Chocolate shop?
Yes, chocolate shop.
From Wisconsin.
Yep.
Nice.
It's from Madison, Wisconsin, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Someone want to make a motion then?
Sure, I will make a motion to approve the application for common victular license with the hours of operation being Wednesday to Sunday, 12 to 8 p.m. generally, but subject to being open on Monday and Tuesday for the same hours if there's a holiday.
Good.
I'll second Jamie's well-worded motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Sorry you with the guinea pig.
Almost, it's okay.
See how well they learn.
Yeah.
And I'll try to let you know as soon as possible when I have a date.
Be there.
Okay.
I can walk there.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, next we have a semi-recitation from Leo Goman III to go from full-time dispatcher to part-time dispatcher. Is there any question?
The police chief supports this.
Right. No questions? Somebody want to make a motion then to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Goman, that moved from full-time to part-time dispatcher, effective date of June 22nd.
I'll second it.
My apologies.
No problem. Tuesdays, FBI night. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, next, we're going to hold that until the chief dessert is in with us. Okay, next we have a request to add commercial to all industrial connection fees under the new sewer and water connection fees. Questions?
I'm assuming it was just a definitional...
Yeah, it was just overlooked when we were putting the rate table together. We noticed that the commercial was left off, and we said, "We might get ourselves into trouble if we don't do anything about that." I would like to bring up one other thing that I would ask you to consider. The previous, if we, when we looked back at the sewer regulations, there was actually a minimum charge for the sewer commercial conduction, and then there was also a formula, so it was an either-or, but that was also left out of the chart. It's on the chart that it was provided with your memo. If you look under sewer connection fee industrial slash commercial, which there's that commercial, originally it was $1,200 or $225 per 100 gallons. We would like to add that back in, so it's now $10,000 minimum or $225, 225 per 100 gallons per day, whichever is greater. So whichever the great is greater, which it works out to, I think I did the math, it was like 4,400 gallons a day would bring you over that $10,000.
Okay, any questions from the board?
How many businesses do more than 400, you said four?
Well, a large business could be up in that 4,000 because it's based on Title V, so it's not, depending on if it was a new connection or an old connection, you know, like an existing, but it's based on a Title V calculation, so you can get up into that range, like, you know, I don't know the businesses around here, but I did a lot of stuff in Southbridge, so, for example, Treehouse Brewery is like 12,000 gallons a day. So, you know, you get something big like that, you would want to be able to charge a little bit more for a larger flow like that.
Makes sense.
Anything else? Someone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the changes as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I'll set Heather. Look at this mess. Next, we have a letter from Local Roots requesting to pay 50% of the AC PB with the balance of the annual payment to be paid by November 1st, 2020, and we did have a letter from them.
So if I might, apparently they had emailed sometime in May prior to my arrival, asking if this would be acceptable. During the transition, they did not receive a response, so they just paid 50%. So we would like the other 50%. So I'm asking for the board to accept that they were splitting their payment this year. They indicated they had some COVID-related income stream issues. So I just wanted to codify. I certainly am not going to say no to getting the other 50% in November, but it does have to be on the record that the payment plan has been altered.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Any other discussion? Someone want to make a motion then to approve the request?
Sure, I will move that we accept the remaining APC, AC PB payment on November 1st, 2022, from Local Roots for the reasons stated in Mr. Iain Dolly's letter.
Second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, we have a request for appointments of Peter Champagne, Chris Tieri, and Jasmine Bell to the Sturbridge Tourist Association. Any...
So I can...
Wait a minute, no, Michelle said some...
I guess they all left, I don't know if they missed any or not.
Well, that's, it's, I mean, people know them.
And I was going to say, these all came highly recommended, and they represent the appropriate bodies that they should be representing, obviously, El Sturbridge Village, a resident and business owner, and so...
Any questions from the board? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I will move to appoint Peter Champagne, Chris Tieri, and Jasmine Bell to the Sturbridge Tourist Association.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
I think they're great additions. I'm looking forward to having all three of them.
Okay, now, Rob, the next two requests, did these come from the people themselves?
Yes. Tony's here.
Yes, no, I know Tony's here.
And Mr. Burlingham did send a request, an email request, asking to be reappointed, yes.
Right, because we usually do them all together, and my mistake, we should have been doing it now. We usually do them so they all start July 1st.
So we're in the process of revamping all of the reappointments and the time schedule so that that happens, so that all appointments come up. The other concern I have, not so much with these full-time staff positions, but with the boards and commissions, is that we never really are putting out a formal advertising for new people who might be interested. So if we start to formalize this process and say that, you know, "If you are interested, please by May 15th submit a letter of interest, whether you're outside or a reappointment," that gives us time to start this whole process. So Michelle's been in the process with Sheila of going through all the boards and commissions, finding out, and we have some that have expired and we're almost holding to get them to that start date. They might get appointed a few days after on that July 5th meeting, but we're in the process of trying to get them all on that cycle.
Because at one time you were scattered all over the place, and then we did come up with the...
Well, and then people don't know, if they want to be involved, how to be involved, or when to sign up, or when to... So I'm getting people requesting to be reappointed, which, of course, we certainly consider reappointments for people who've served, but there are also people who say, "Well, how do I get on a board or commission?" We just had one recently that came to Terry who'd like to be involved in any number of boards or commissions. So we need to put out, and we'll put a massive advertisement out, I'll put it on my Facebook page, we'll put it on the website, we'll talk about it on public access TV, and do everything we can to let people know if they are interested in boards and commissions, that there will be, next year, a May timeframe to apply.
Right. I mean, we can do these...
We'll put a policy in front of the board.
We can do these two now, or...
However you'd like.
What's the board's?
Well, Tony's here.
I know. I thought he just came to enjoy.
She's right, though. It was very confusing to me to know how to, I mean, nobody really had a true answer to what I had to do.
Yeah, normally, the office lets you know that your appointment is due. Are you interested in still serving?
I was very, very good about telling you I was due, but...
Yeah, but you know, we've been...
Which was leaving, yeah.
The whole thing.
That's why I reported to me.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so what's the board's pleasure?
I think we should do the two that we have tonight.
Okay, so somebody want to make a motion?
You're here, and...
There's a period we're going to put on it.
Nelson's was first, so I'll make a motion to reappoint Nelson Burlingham as Building Inspector.
Second.
Okay, it's a three-year appointment, so that would be till June 30th, 2025.
Thank you.
I just wanted to do it in my head, but that's how we've lost a lot of these appointment dates.
Yep, and they all know.
Get recorded.
I'll second Nelson's reappointment.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Tony's?
Sure, I will move to reappoint Tony Crane as tree warden, beginning, with an appointment period ending on June 30th of 2025.
I'll second his, too.
Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, folks. I have to take my wife home now, so...
You should take her out to dinner after, we can sit through this.
We'll go with you.
Ice cream if they were open.
Okay, let's see.
Yeah, you too.
Thanks, Heather.
So many of you. R.
It's always after the town meeting, right? It all piles up for...
Yeah, so this is Hockerman Pedler license for Dennis Walsh. Yeah, so this is Hocker and Pedler license for Dennis Walsh.
The corn stand.
On Stand 446 Main Street. It's the one in the parking lot that they've-
This is the corn one?
Corn.
Yeah.
I bought a lot of corn there.
It's where I buy it.
As I moved to town.
It's right in the China buffet parking lot.
Oh, okay.
I spoke to him today, and he said he wasn't sure exactly when you have corn, so he's hoping sometime July. Yeah, it's all weather-dependent. It's the best corn around here.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to approve Hawker Pedler license for Dennis Walsh?
I will make a motion to approve the Hawker and Pedler license for Dennis Walsh for 446 Main Street Back Parking Lot.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, next, we have a transient vendor license, Wendy Collins. Dolls, Bears Miniature, this is at the Sturbridge Host, 626, from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. Any questions? She's been in before.
Yeah. I think we told her last time that she didn't need to come all the way up here for her with gas and everything, yeah.
No, that's what I told Michelle, but no, she-
I will move to approve the transient vendor license for Wendy Collins for June 26, 2022 at the Sturbridge Host Hotel from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay. Okay, transient vendor license for David Brockman, DB and BC Productions LLC for July 10th and 11th at the Sturbridge Hotel from 7 a.m. to 5 p.m. Questions? There's vintage clothing, antiques, textiles. Motion?
I'll make-
Go ahead, go ahead, Jason, no, you got it.
I will make a motion to approve the transient vendor license for David Brockman, DB and BC Productions LLC for July 10th and 11th at the Sturbridge Host Hotel from 7 a.m. to 5 p.m.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, liquor license, one day liquor license for, I can never pronounce this every year.
Agronomy.
Just say it fast.
I got to get one in there tonight, that's all.
Thank you, thank you, Ian.
They're good people, too.
We all, we all need help.
I think that's true.
We all need help.
Some more than others.
Speak for yourself, sister.
Okay, I'll give you to sell one in the Sturbridge farmer markets on the date that's listed on the application. It's for the seasons.
So moved.
That's the safe way.
Seconded.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, appropriation of wetland protection funds in the amount of $5,882 to fund a portion of the salary of a ConCon administrative assistant.
Yeah, it seems fine to me, it's not anything.
That way, it's one of the uses. Okay, motion?
Yeah, I will move to appropriate $5,882 for funding a portion of the salary of the Conservation Department's administrative assistant for FY 2023.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, old business.
I have none.
Jason?
I have no old.
No. Oh, no, you know what, I did just, sorry, I know, I know. Give them time.
I was too slow.
Yes, I've got a follow-up on that one, yes. Yes. You know how we put flags up? Yeah, they should be up. For Memorial Day, so hopefully by the Fourth of July.
Say it every time I drive down the road.
Or when you go away on the weekend and the other town has one. Yeah.
Okay, Jamie, any old?
No.
I have none. New? Ian?
None.
I do, I, I'm going to try to explain this the best I can. So Papa Warner parents reached out to me. Turner's Field, they'll be giving a year to regrow. But they just gave, so Papa Warner usually practices there, so they told them that they cannot practice on it for a year to regrow. They said that they may be able to go to the junior high or the high school. The junior high or the high school said, "Yes, you can, but only when we start school." So Papa Warner usually starts practice mid-July, and that's a six-week break. So if we could work with Annie about finding Papa Warner home or letting them practice on Turner's and then giving a year for them to find another home-
Yes.
And then next year, regrow.
I will absolutely bring that-
Is the reason because there's nobody at the high school, is that the logic?
Yeah, so when school, they don't allow a team to practice unless school's in session, you know, during the day or, you know, at night. At night, they can go there, but it has to be during the school year.
I'll work with Annie. We'll find, we'll find them a home.
Maybe that's our, what's SRO doing this summer? Maybe if there's, there were concern about somebody being up there for security, if it's like a purely-
Oh, no, the SRO does regular duty.
Only allow students to practice during the school year, so that may come from whatever is-
Yeah, maybe insurance, it could be also-
That's what I mean.
With the regulations.
The mass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Papa Warner has to have a home.
We got to find Papa Warner.
And they have to have July because they got to do those early workouts to be safe, get those kids in shape.
I can't do-
That's how they get hurt if they don't, so. August workouts.
Yeah, that's why he's not playing football.
I coached it for you, Papa Warner. August workouts with him.
Oh, wow.
10 and 11-year-olds.
I think I could play that.
They were afraid of me, but they were afraid of me by the- Terrified of me by the edge.
Absolutely, no.
Up the garden.
Back in 2003.
Emery, any new?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just sitting here thinking about the boys or maybe some girls in Papa Warner not being able to practice. It's awful. No, I don't have any new.
Jamie?
No, thanks.
Um, just, the Sturbridge Rotary Club is celebrating their 50th anniversary, so I think it would be appropriate if the town gave them a, I was going to say, ticket, a citation from the town, thanking them for all the work they do in the community and worldwide. I already spoke to Michelle on kind of wording.
I agree.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, the Town of Sturbridge, issues a certificate of appreciation for all of the community service that the Rotary Club has done in our town and worldwide, and to commemorate their 50th anniversary.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Now, we're going to have it presented at the dinner or have Claus come in for-
Probably at the dinner, which would entail people coming in to sign it.
That's fine.
Before next Wednesday.
I may need you before that anyway, depending on what happens in executive session. So do something very quick.
Okay, but people will, town hall's open Tuesday night till 7:00. Okay, Michelle will let us know when it's done. No use asking for citizens for them.
I'll see somebody on the line, right? No, there is no line.
No line. No hybrid line.
As a matter of fact, they didn't vote on that yet, did they, the state?
No, not yet.
It's still July 15th.
In my car, and so it's really warm. Tom thinks it's disgusting.
Hey. Well?
The hybrid interaction has actually encouraged more participation in some ways in meetings for the people at home.
Okay, we do have a request for executive session, Emery.
Oh, yeah, sorry. My gosh. I make a motion that we go into executive session per Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subparagraph 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares.
So declared. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Emery? Yes.
Uh, yes, dude, we add the, are we going to re-
And not to reconvene.
And not to reconvene an open session.
Okay, and I vote yes. Oh, I did forget one thing under new business. I did get an email from a gentleman interested in being on Affordable Housing Trustees. I will respond to him that it really hasn't been advertised yet, but, you know, and there's no money for them to work with, which is too bad. You know, but, okay. So we're all set for executive session. I guess we can do it here, because-